Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April Village Board meeting. It's nice to see everybody out on this nice spring night in your winter coats. It's great. If you could please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, this is kind of an exciting night for some of us that are new especially, but it's always a special night because this is the swearing-in of the village officials for their next terms. And in order to do that, we will have our wonderful Justice, Village Justice James Green, do that for us. But until I swear him in, we have to, you know, can't have you do that yet. So if you'll join me up here, that would be great.
Beautiful.
Which side do you want to be on? That's my...
Good evening.
All right. You have to raise your right hand. Thank you. I, James Green...
I, James Green...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of village justice...
Of village justice.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Nice. Thank you. I apologize. Our village justice, Judge Green, he always gives a wonderful introduction to these things. I can't do it justice, so to speak. So now you get to do that part, okay? Because you're excellent at it.
Well, that's very kind of you, Madam Mayor-elect. Let's see if we can do this. Hi. Well, good evening, everybody. So I guess you know now if you didn't, but if you, I'll introduce myself. I'm James Green, one of the two justiceses here in the village of Altamont. I've been doing this for about 10 years now in the role of village justice. And thank you, Carrie, for having me tonight and to the trustees, both sitting trustees and newly elected. I guess what Carrie is referring to is I always like to thank not only the people being sworn in, but the sitting trustees, but it really extends to the people that showed up tonight, too, because in a small upstate community, I sometimes say in court that, in fact, I often do when we start court for the evening, that it doesn't look like a courtroom. We don't have statues and paintings and, you know, fancy decor, but the Constitution of the United States, as we're going to swear to, applies in the other room, and as does the Constitution of the State of New York. And all the glory and the power of our great nation and state are effectuated in that room, as protected by our men and women in service, of course. So take it very seriously, and so thank you for your service to all of you. Without the volunteer, it's essentially volunteer service. We do get paid small stipends, but that's not the point. The point is for voluntary service. For those of you sitting in the public tonight, thank you for showing up, especially on a cold night, and it's important to have this kind of participation. So without further ado, we're swearing in some people officially that were elected.
I'm coming back.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So I'm going to let you state your own names, okay? All right. So raise your right hand, and I... State your name.
Carrie Denine.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of village mayor...
Of village mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Madam Mayor. You're reelected. Have you kept track of how many years, Carrie?
Oh, in this position?
In as mayor, yeah.
Going in eight so far.
Eight, eight as mayor, and then before that a trustee.
It's been a while, yeah.
Yeah, it's been a little while. Okay. Anybody else who happened to get reelected that would like to be sworn in?
Who would like to go next? Go ahead. One of you has to go.
Not optional.
Not optional.
No, not at this point, right? Okay, raise your right hand. And I...
I, Sandra Serrapino.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of village trustee...
Of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Good.
All right. I...
I, John Scali.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of village justice...
Of village trustee.
Trustee.
Given your job.
Sorry. Village trustee. Thank you. Just checking. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Sorry for the flub. The village clerk tells me that'll be on the website for everybody to, I guess, make a meme out of it or something.
Ooh, nice.
Apologies, John.
I think I will give you a fly on this one because John's wife, of course, is a village justice as well. You probably had that in your head as you were looking at him.
That's kind. Thank you.
Yeah. That's what it was.
Very good.
Thank you again. We really appreciate you coming here every four years or so, or two years, actually, every two years maybe, and doing this. I think you, you know, you really, I don't know, just set it up beautifully for the jobs that people do when they work for the village, when they do these volunteer positions. And we appreciate all your time because not only have you been a justice for like 10 years, but you've trained new justices and, you know, been working with everybody in our court clerk. So we thank you for all the work you do.
Well, it's my pleasure. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. So going to our agenda. Let's see. So, attach, you have the organizational meeting materials. It's, you'll see all the, let me turn this over for a second, my friends. This is our organizational meeting we have annually. This sets up many of the things that we do yearly, just to give you some for instances. We have positions such as who is in charge of vital statistics in our offices and who's the deputy registrar and things like that for our office staff. We talk about the ZBA. That in particular, James Sullivan, who's been on the ZBA board, he is stepping up to be chairperson. Danny Ramirez sold his house and sadly is moving, but we thank him. He has been on the ZBA for quite some time. He's been chairperson for a while now. He's done a wonderful job in that role. So we thank him for all the work that he's done. I think he's going to be in the area for a short time, and then I think he's moving out of state. But it's great that James would step up on this. Also, we have a new member, which is Elizabeth LaParca will be joining, taking one of the empty seats there that James was filling. So those are our new ZBA positions. It talks about our official banks and our official paper, times of our meetings, when the dates are when they're set. It establishes our engineers list. We've added a couple new engineers this year, FCM Engineering, Creighton Manning Engineering. We use many different firms for whatever the project is. It gives us, we can get quotes, which is great, to get the best deal for village. And there's different people who have different specialties for what we do, whether it be a sidewalk or a road or a water project. So that's something we do. We established that Young Summer is our, they're our village designated attorneys. Allison Phillips is here tonight. She's our designated attorney most of the time. Sometimes we have a fill-in from the firm, but we thank Allison again for being sticking with us. So this is all part of the organizational meeting. I would consider a resolution to adopt the proposed appointments, designations, schedules, personnel, and financial procedures contained within the organizational meeting. Could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Oh, John, one second. All right, John is first and Sandra is second. Can I have roll call, please?
Trustee Serrapino.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scali.
In favor.
Mayor Denine. In favor. Okay, just going to move that around. I'm going to go down to staff reports. Altamont Fire Department is not here this evening. They got called away, not the department, but our chief got called away, but we have a report that was submitted. The Police Department, we don't have a report this evening. Public Works, just a short report, a report for me to start, which is bag and leaf pickup. I think everyone has figured out that it started. We did get some calls about loose leaf pickup. That is only in the fall, just for the people at home. That's, that only happens in the fall. I'd like to introduce, though, take a moment just to introduce to somebody great that is here with us. Chris Arzemanian is our new Department of Public Works Superintendent. So welcome to the village. We're so happy to have you. Great. He's, you know, semi-local, so which is great. He's close by and filling the seat that Jeff Muller retired from about a year ago. And we're, I know the team is very excited. He's been with us a week now, I think. So I'm so glad you're here.
Glad to be here.
Excellent. Look for his face around town, you know, wave to him. Okay, we're all good. This is a time for public comment. If you have something you'd like to share with the board, you can come up to the microphone and just give us your name, and if you have something you want to share, this is the time.
Hello.
Congratulations to the candidates.
Thank you.
Great night to be out.
Oh, yeah. Sure is.
Even my cat wouldn't go out today. So Mayor Denine, village trustees, and the Altamont community, hello again. I'm Dave Burke. I'm the president of Historic Altamont. As always, I have a prepared statement, or I'll forget half of what I want to say. I've been looking, really looking forward to this meeting because I have a lot of great news to share. I've always been, I've been reporting about our ARPA grant, the $50,000, with the two deliverables. The first deliverable is the Altamont Area Trail Network Plan. To achieve this plan, we formed a trail committee composed of informed and interested local residents. The knowledge and experience of this team is quite impressive. The trail team is working closely with Labella Associates, a very well-respected international planning corporation, to produce this plan. We are close to having a draft Altamont Area Trail Network Plan ready for the village and the public's review. We will soon be scheduling a community-wide open house to solicit everyone's input and thoughts. Village feedback will be an important part of the final plan. When available, I will provide a copy of the draft plan to the board. The second deliverable is the very exciting Altamont Community Kiosk. We have made great progress on this part. But first, before I start, I want to thank the village for the very generous offer of the bluestone for the kiosk pavers. The use of the historic bluestone for the pavers is a really nice touch on a community kiosk. Brings it all together. Thank you very much. We sincerely thank you. So on March 24th, Albany County approved our kiosk contract, and on March 27th, we signed a contract with JGR Builders, a village of Altamont-based contractor, lives right here in the village. So all those ARPA funds stay right here. And this Monday, April 6th, we received our approved building permit from the village. So next up is the shovel and the ground, and we're hoping that will take place in June. So the next big thing is planning is underway for a ribbon cutting. And Carrie, thank you for your suggestion. I've spoken with Todd Pucci, and he was very, very helpful.
Oh, good.
I spoke with him at length, actually. I've also reached out and spoke with Paul Miller of the Altamont Fire Department, Laura Shore of ACT, the Fairgrounds, and the VFW. All of them are very excited to be involved, and the VFW said that they would like to provide an honor guard. Should be excellent. This ribbon cutting will be the unveiling of a new Altamont landmark that will be here long after we're gone. We are hoping for a village-wide celebration. We want organizations to come and set up tables. We're planning activities for kids and adults. The whole village is welcome. Everybody is welcome. We hope for and welcome village input and involvement with the celebration planning process. I also have an update on the Altamont Story Map. I did a demo on that last time. We have added a new tab. The cemetery tab has gone live, and we are presently working on two new tabs, a Historic Barns tab and a Public Gardens tab, who I'm working with Keith Lee on. I've done Story Map presentations now for the Fairgrounds and also for the Gildon Historical Society at Gildon Free Library. Both were very, very well-attended. The town of Gildon has added the Story Map link to their website. The response has been so positive, I've been approached to help to put together a Gildon Story Map.
Nice.
Our Story Map, the Altamont Story Map, in under three months has already 1,400 hits.
Great.
So the next Historic Altamont meeting is Tuesday, May 27th, at the Altamont Reform Church. We meet at 6:45. Our meetings are always open to the public, and we encourage everybody to join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
That's good. Is there anybody else? I don't see anybody moving. Okay, just double-checking. Turn my thing over here. All right, let's move on to item one on the agenda. Consider approval of Treasurers' Abstracts Number 18 and 19 and transfer of funds as submitted. Who just said it? Michelle? I'm sorry. Michelle is first. And second?
I'll second.
John, Sandra beat you that time, I think. Sandra is second. And roll call, please.
Trustee Serrapino.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scali.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Allison has the, do you have the announcement? Can you do item two for us and open the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is a legal notice. Please take notice that the village of Altamont will conduct a public hearing in the community room, 115 Main Street, Altamont, State of New York, Albany County, on April 8th, 2025, at 7 o'clock PM to consider the 2025 to 2026 village budget before final adoption. By order of the Board of Trustees, Village of Altamont, Patty Blackwood, Village Clerk, dated March 27th, 2025. Thanks.
So this is the public hearing for the budget. I'm going to turn it over to Nick, who'll give us a summary of how we got to this point with the budget, and then we'll take comments after that, if that's okay. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
So as with previous years, we hold a couple of budget workshops over the past few months to review the input from department heads, make adjustments, changes, kind of address our questions and comments. All in all, very few major changes. Things were kind of added or removed or moved around within our current budget cap. So if one budget line required a little bit extra based on the past year, we were able to find savings elsewhere. As with last year, we still have a couple of large projects that are in flight or wrapping up, so we're not kicking off anything major this year, but we are moving forward with some of our technology goals. So if you remember, a few years ago, we installed the camera and microphone system here in this room for meetings. We have a digital community board out front that went in last year, and we're starting now to digitize the files in the office, starting with the Building Department. So that's kind of the next phase of that project. We have also started to increase the sidewalk reserves and advance the Maple Ave Extension Project that's due to kick off next summer. There is also a 2% cost of living adjustment for staff, and every year we also look at different departments within the village for adjustments to make sure that our pay is competitive. And we made some adjustments this year to the Police Department and some of the office staff. All in all, there were still some increases. As everyone is probably aware, inflation has not spared the village, so on materials and especially insurance costs, those things went up, and we offset them as much as possible elsewhere. So we were able to do all this, and we still are underneath the New York State tax cap.
So...
That's my highlights for you, Mayor.
Nice summary. So if you have any questions or comments, you can step up to the microphone and, you know, let us know, if you had a chance to see it. I'm not seeing movement. Everybody looks happy. Okay. So could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
John is first, and second?
I'll second.
Is Nick? And roll call, please.
Trustee Serrapino.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scali.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Item three is consider approving the 2025-26 village budget. Could I have a motion, please?
Almost.
Sandra? And second?
I'll second.
Nick is second. And roll call, please.
Trustee Serrapino.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scali.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Item four is consider approval of $4,294.80 stipend to Larry Adams Jr. for filling in as Acting Superintendent of Public Works from March 2024 through March 2025, stipend to be paid out through the last four payrolls of the 24-25 fiscal budget. If any of you know Larry, Larry has been for the last year filling many roles, just his own and as a water operator, and then just overall everything guy in the village. So we thank him for all the effort and just all his work. He's not going anywhere, but he's, you know, it was, he went above and beyond what he normally does for his job. So he's not here tonight. He's actually, I think, on vacation. He doesn't ever take them, so I think he took a few days to go on vacation.
That's why it's snowing.
And that's why it's snowing. He went somewhere warm, so yes, so it's his fault. But we do thank him and welcome Chris at the same time, and I hope he'll be a great resource for you, obviously, on Everything Village. All right. So could I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Sandra said that, right? Oh, Michelle did. Sorry, your voices are getting similar. And second is Sandra. And roll call, please.
Trustee Serrapino.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scali.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Item six is consider approving a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for shared services with the village of Voorisville. This is going to be worked out afterwards with approval of our attorneys, both in Voorisville and here. It's a DPW shared services contract. We were lucky enough to get a piece of equipment that doesn't need to be used too often, but they need it to, and it's a way that we can share the costs, the expenses, and we're going to work out the details in the next couple of weeks, so it should be good. Could I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Me.
Michelle is first, and second?
I'll second.
Sandra?
Trustee Serrapino.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scali.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Item five is consider authorizing Larry Adams, Assistant Superintendent of Public Works, to move forward with termination of water service on April 15th, 2025, if payment is not received from the following delinquent non-residents, Todd Clark, 721 Route 146 and Phoenix, New York LLC, 180, or 1180 Burn Altamont Road. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
John is first, and second?
I'll second.
Nick is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Serrapino.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scali.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Item six is consider approving a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for shared services with the village of Voorisville. This is going to be worked out afterwards with approval of our attorneys, both in Voorisville and here. It's a DPW shared services contract. We were lucky enough to get a piece of equipment that doesn't need to be used too often, but they need it to, and it's a way that we can share the costs, the expenses, and we're going to work out the details in the next couple of weeks, so it should be good. Could I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Me.
Michelle is first, and second?
I'll second.
Sandra? Roll call, please.
Trustee Serrapino.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scali.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Item seven is consider approval of standard workday resolution of six hours per day for mayor, trustee, justice, village clerk, treasurer, deputy treasurer, court clerk, administrative assistant, parks department, historian, fire inspector, senior van driver, gardener, and office of cleaner for the New York State Retirement System for reporting purposes. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'm not sure who got that first.
No, it was Nick, right? No?
I'll make the motion.
Nick will make the motion. Who would like the second?
I'll second.
Sandra, she got, sorry, John.
That's all right.
I heard her first.
So good.
All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Serrapino.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scali.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. You'd think we're new at this, but we're not. All right. Item eight, thank you. Consider approval of standard workday resolution of eight hours per day for the Department of Public Works Building Department, Code Enforcement, and Police Department for New York State Retirement System for reporting purposes. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Consider approval of standard workday resolution of eight hours per day for the Department of Public Works Building Department, Code Enforcement and Police Department for New York State Retirement System for reporting purposes. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
You two are, you are tied.
Total tie.
I'm gonna give that one to John, 'cause I feel bad. Sandra, will you be second?
I will.
Okay, thank you. And roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farahoff?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Consider authorizing Mayor Denne to sign renewal contracts with Highmark Northeastern New York and Delta Dental Insurance for Village of Altamont employees. Could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Nick, second.
I'll do it.
Michelle? And roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farahoff?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Okay. Item 10 is consider acknowledging required annual audits of Justice Green's and Justice Hohl and Scully's 2024 records that were conducted on March 12th, 2024 by Trustee Sarafino and Heather Kelly, Treasurer. And could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Michelle is first, second.
I'll second.
Sandra?
Can she second it?
Since she's in it?
Oh, they can't.
Yeah, she can. Yeah, she can. That's okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean you could never say it.
No, I know what you're saying though.
It's okay.
Roll call, please. Oh, it was Michelle and then Sandra.
I missed you.
No, I didn't.
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farahoff?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Item 11 is consider authorization to expend $43,250.28 from the police car reserve, subject to permissive referendum, for a 2025 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor Utility, AWD vehicle. It's a lot. Per request of Todd Pucci, Chief of Police. So this is, there's not a budget impact. This is the money that they've been saving and they have a rotation for their cars. This will be the new car coming in and the two sedans, the black and white sedans, they will be going for sale or something, to bid or whatever, auction. So that'll be money coming back to their reserve a little bit, probably not that much 'cause they're kind of old. But, so that's what this is. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
John and second.
I'll second.
Nick and roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farahoff?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. This next one's long. Long, holy, holy. Okay, consider requests for village water and sewer for single-family dwellings loaded at 1 Kamaya Way, 2 Kamaya Way, 3 Kamaya Way, 1 Brenda Jean Way, 2 Brenda Jean Way, 3 Brenda Jean Way, 4 Brenda Jean Way, 137A Western Avenue and 141 Western Avenue and 143 Western Avenue, Altamont. Per request of CM Fox Living Solutions, the capital charge for new service connections to water and sewers is $7,500 for each dwelling. Larry Adams Assistant Superintendent of Public Works has reviewed the applications and recommended the connections. This is part of the development that got approval through the ZBA process. So this is the permission to hook up. We've actually asked them to install infrastructure at the onset because some of the roads we want to pave and we want them to, you know, dig them up now and then we can pave them later. So it'll be worth it for everybody. So could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Sandra, that was you, right?
Yes.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
All right, Nick. And roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farahoff?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Item 13 is consider approval and update of, to villages Altamont credit card policy. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
John was first. Michelle is gonna be second. And roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farahoff?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Item 14 is consider approval of update to Village of Altamont's facilities rental fee schedule. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
All right, Nick?
I'll be next.
All right, Sandra, second?
Nope, that's me.
I saw her, I saw her hand.
Did you say it hit my finger?
I saw her finger. I'm sorry, I thought that's why I should.
I'm not doing a thing else.
I take it back. Michelle will be second. Michelle is the second.
Did you put your finger?
She raised her hand. Yeah.
I didn't look at your finger.
It's the teacher in here, right?
It's the teacher. I saw her hand go up, I called on her. That's the way it goes. Yes.
Sorry.
Roll call, please. Sorry, Patty.
Trustee Sarafino?
We're confusing.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farahoff?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Item 15 is consider approval to hire Jeff Cardinals, connected as part-time 2025 seasonal gardener at 2614 per hour.